This conference will now be recorded.
Um, today's Thursday, July 27th, 2023. The meeting of the Rome City Council will come to order. Um, Mrs. King is out this evening. However, we do have a quorum. So let's get started. We'll start out with the invocation and we're very fortunate to have Pastor Pastor Van Zant with us this evening.
Let's go to Lord in prayer. Dear the Father, I thank for this day and I thank for the things that you bless us with. I thank for this day and I thank for the city council, city administrator and our fire chief and police chief. Lord, I pray that you'll please us continue to put your hand on the city of Rome. I pray that you'll please us be with those that are serving our community and I pray that you'll put a hedge protection around them, especially with the severe heat that we're going through. And God, I pray that you'll please us allow the patrons to be law abiding citizens and I pray that you'll please us allow uh the spirit to continue to move and guide the those who govern our city. I pray that you'll please us allow us to prepare for the growth that is headed this way. Just allow us to make the proper decisions and I pray that you'll please us empower them, Lord. For this in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Um, council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary or citiesecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 PM on the day of meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a friend, family member or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign or slander individuals shall be caused for termination of time, privileges and removal from council chambers. Okay, Ms. Odom?
All right. First, we have Lisa Wilson by Joanne Wilson regarding ESD budget, fire department bylaws and MDD.
Thank you, Chain. Mayor and council, these are Lisa Wilson's comments and her thoughts, but they're kind of right on. On the agenda tonight is the ESD. I feel this is a wonderful opportunity for our city. This would mean that the cost for the emergency services fire department would be shared by all who are in our fire district and not just the citizens of Rome footing these costs. Inasmuch as this part of the county is really growing, why not have everyone pay their fair share? That extra money for our city could be allocated to water, sewer, streets, facilities or other much needed things. And here at budget time, we need to find ways to find money for critical needs. Please strongly consider the ESD option. What little I know about a MDD, it sounds that once it's established, it could really help our city. However, this half cent of our sales tax that has been going into the general fund needs to be addressed in the upcoming budget. Also, I am confused when the fire department is wanting to abolish their bylaws. I recall requesting a copy in the past and somewhere in my stack of stuff, I got back, there are no responsive documents. If that is so, why is there a need for now doing away with the document I was told that did not exist? The same scenario happened when a copy of the ISO rating was requested. It came back garbled and not really anything that told about an ISO. I am concerned about the budget. If we do not have a certified annual audit report for 2022 that would give us our financial status, how can we proceed to develop a budget? With city in debt, we need to stop wasteful spending. How much did the recent survey with minimal response that you couldn't even use what came in cost the city? Time is also money. Lastly, please, 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 the city needs a forensic audit. Please see that one is actually happens. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have Deborah B. Kraft regarding ESD and dispatch.
I'm Deborah B. Kraft. Okay, I live at 360 West Second. I can understand the theory behind not wanting to pay the. We give the county property tax dollars and the half cent. They give us dispatch, jail and 25,000 in labor and equipment for our road repair. If we take the half cent away and the dispatch, do we lose that equipment and labor? How much would it cost us to hire the equipment and labor? Don't cut off your nose to spite your face. Not wanting the county to double dip, as it's been called, is a double standard. The city gets property tax and still charges the citizens to use the parks for events. So how is this different from the county collecting tax dollars and then charging us for dispatch? Are you are willing to pay someone for dispatch? I would think the county could give us more in return for that than an individual city could. As far as an ESD, according to an ex-fire chief, an ESD would increase the fire department income by at least five times what they get now from the city. This would be very helpful to them. It may even be enough to allow them to go full time paid fire department. At the same time, it would lower our city's MNO, maintenance and operation, allowing us to use the money for roads or building repair. That's a win-win. I know that it would raise the property tax by three to 10 cents. Go middle road started at five or six cents. The increase in property tax rate would be offset by the lowering of the MNO. Again, a win-win. I do hope you consider voting to put an ESD on the November ballot. The only downside to an ESD that I can come up with is the fact that it would be managed by a board appointed by the county commissioners. But all in all, I do believe it would help grow our fire department faster, get new equipment and buildings faster and if they stay under then if they stay under control of the city. And then we need an audit before we do a budget. In reality, we need a forensic audit due to money having been taken from one bank to another and back and then back again, along with it going from a few accounts to almost 30 accounts, then back to one account and now it's going into a few accounts, switching money around. Also, at least twice, large amounts of money has been missing, once in the retirement accounts and then in the money that missed out of Wells Fargo due to someone scamming or hacking. So it got refunded, but we need a forensic audit. Thank you.
And last, we have Shirley Mize regarding bylaws and ESD.
Hello, I'm Shirley Mize. On bylaws, um corporate bylaws function is is a legal contract between the officers, directors and shareholders of the Texas corporation outlining the rules and procedures your corporation will follow. Bylaws cover a range of topics including finance, voting, appointing officers and directors and much more. While you won't, you won't have to file this with with the Secretary of State, these bylaws are still needed. Corporate bylaws are legally required in Texas. Corporate bylaws establish the rules and roles within your corporation. As I understand, at one point, we were talking about Rome being treated as a business. We have different departments, but the fire department is still a business. Corporate bylaws prove that your business is a legitimate corporation. I feel we need bylaws to be able to keep our checks and balances. We may have a handbook that we want to go by. I know they have a personnel handbook that they also address, but I think that they need assistance and help and I think they need it through the council. The council needs to understand what the fire department is doing. Not that we want to keep a childcare or babysitting situation on these people. We just need to understand how things are being run and how the money is being spent and what's needed and necessary to help these people move forward. So I would strongly consider us having the bylaws read to the council to see if they're important enough to keep them or not, and then from there conclude what needs to happen to move forward. ESDs, I think an ESD is very important to our city. We talk about always carrying the burden for the whole county for Rome. And I think it's important that maybe we spread that information out as far as the that type of ESD in our in our area. I think it's a benefit for our our area, for the county and for the city and for the finance. I think our taxpayers have more burden than what they can handle right now. So I think that it's a good thing to talk about the ESD. I do have a question on the ESD. If we ever go to an ESD, what happens to the taxpayers' equipment that they've already paid for to go into an ESD? But I would strongly consider doing an ESD to help our town survive. Thank you.
That is the end of public comment? Okay, very good. Um, we've got bulk trash pickup August 1st, um, planning and zoning meeting August 7th at 6:00 PM and then another city council meeting August the 10th at 6:00 PM. Council have any other announcements?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Long. Rome Community Library, 63 and 23 event on August 5th. I have information up here. You can sign up for the duct tank. I have information on the summer activities that were attended, attendance information. A lot of families and kids came to the library this summer. And I also have brochures on events that are upcoming at the library. Some look pretty interesting and it's also on their website. So come see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move along. Consent agenda. Got number one, minutes of city council regular session dated July 13th, 2023 and number two, minutes of city council budget workshop dated July 14th, 2023. Motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, regular agenda, swearing in of reserve officer James George. You have a nice tan and you, if this is your significant other, she's very pretty. I love those shoes and they make my feet hurt.
Is this working? I think so. Hey, everybody. Thank you, council members. Thank you for having us up here. Today I get to do one of the great things as a chief and that's to swear in a new officer. I first met James George, I believe it was 2002, when I became a a motor, I was a sergeant at the time and I was assigned over the motor unit of the department I was in and went to my first training. And when I went, motor training is normally attended by 20 to 30 motor jocks, all competing to be the best. And when I got there, I didn't know what I was doing, was very inexperienced and me being me, I just stepped back and I watched and I said, who's the best person here? Who's the best rider? Who's the most focused? Who's the hardest charging guy on this parking lot? And it became very clear immediately that James George, who was with Northwoodson Hills at the time, was the best. And I came to learn that he was actually not only the best on the parking lot that day, but arguably the best police motorcycle rider in the state of Texas. Since then, I've gotten to know him as not only a great motor officer, but a great police officer. He's been a SWAT operator. He's one of those manly men that do all the cool testosterone driven things that police officers do. When he retired, I went to his retirement and I made it a point to tell him how important I thought he was to not only the motor unit, but the motor community. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a community within a community in law enforcement. There's an esprit de corps that is that is above and beyond what you have as a police officer and he was a huge part of that. And being the intelligent person, he gave all that up to pursue his endeavors in the corporate world to make money and provide for his lovely wife Angela, which he's done. But much like a lot of us, you get out of this profession and you make money and you realize there's still something in the heart behind the badge that says, I need to provide, I need to, I need to protect and serve because that's where my heart is and that's what makes a difference in other people's lives. So when he reached out to me and he said, hey, Eric, um, I've been out of law enforcement for a little bit, but I'd like to come back in a reserve capacity. I couldn't wait to get the background done and add him to our department. He brings a wealth of knowledge, experience and like I say, for a man of his age, he uh, he's still a hard charger and he's going to be an incredible addition to our department. So before I swear him in, I'd like him to come up, introduce his lovely wife. You will see when we swear somebody in in Rome, the team stands behind him when we do. So as we move to the center, they will fill in behind James as I swear him in and then his wife will pin him. But before that happens, I'm going to have us say a few words.
That was way too nice. He always talks really good about me, so most of what he says is not true, I'm sure. Uh, and I don't provide for my wife, she provides for me. Uh, but I did that right a long time ago. We've been married for 27 years, so this is my lovely wife and she's going to be pinning me and I'm very happy to be here and you know, get back into the community. We live just just outside of Rome, so this is a good place for me to be and and then serve and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you all very much.
Aye, State Attorney.
Aye, James George. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
At the office of police officer. For the city of Rome.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
All right, number two, dissolving bylaws for fire department. And this will be Fire Chief Estes.
is that back back in September 29th of 2008 is when the city uh did the Rome Fire Rescue Constitution of bylaws. They have been updated three other times since then. Uh, we're not a corporate, we are a volunteer department or it was a volunteer department back then, which most volunteer departments throughout Texas writes their own bylaws. It has nothing to do with corporate or state. It's within its own city and its own entity. So got that out of the way. The Constitution of bylaws include the purpose, the organization, the membership, the conduct, the finances, the business meeting and amendments. We have all that already through our city documents, uh, since we are a city fire department. We're not a volunteer anymore. We are a combination department heading towards a full time department eventually. We have two sets of rule. We have four, we have four volunteers, we have eight part time paid, we have two full time paid. So we have overwhelmingly, we have paid people over volunteers. The volunteers back when they did this, each year they would select their officers out of the volunteer group and they would serve one year. The chief and the assistant chief was every two years. Now that we have a full time chief, which is me on the department, I cannot go by two sets of rules for everybody. We have SOG, standard operating guidelines, which covers the purpose, the organization, the membership, the conduct, the finances, the visiting and the amendments. So we're doubling everything. And when we get to hire, the the way the hiring process is under our current bylaws is that they choose who they want to bring to me. I have no say in that. Well, I'm the chief and I'm over the department and I'm responsible for everybody on there. I want to make sure that they get background checks, that they get a physical agility done, that they get a doctor's physical done, which hasn't been happening. So with our SOGs, it will all be written in there. SOGs will be at city hall, they'll have a copy of it, they'll be on our website. So anybody and everybody can look at our website and see our SOGs. Uh, the bylaws that was talked about uh is right here. If anybody wants a copy, I'm be glad to go run some copies off and give it to you for the bylaws that they have. Uh, they're out of date. If I'm responsible for everybody, I have to have one set of rules and that's our SOGs that I will write with the people on the department. So everything that's covered under the constitution bylaws is going to be in the SOGs and they already are. I just have not put them out forth because I have to get rid of the bylaws first in order to put our SOGs out. Does that make sense?
Chief Estes? So you're saying that the volunteers and the paid firefighters, they're all going to be under the SOGs?
Yes.
They're all going to have rules that they have to follow, correct?
Yes, and inside of that, there's going to be definitions where a reserve is going to be a volunteer, which means they don't get paid. It's kind of set up like the police department is, but there's no compensation for that because they're volunteering their time as a reserve. But under the rank, they're all going to be firefighters. Uh, I can't have an officer that was picked by somebody because somebody likes them better than the other person. I gotta have an officer that is qualified, that has all the certifications, that puts forth the effort. That's how I'm going to promote from now on. I'm not going to promote from so and so likes me better than the other person. You can't have that in the bylaws. You can't have that in a professional department, period.
So what staff is looking for this evening would be direction from council. If you are interested in having Chief Estes pursue update to this process where we would combine it all into one SOG. It has been a little bit of a shift recently. You will recall that it wasn't too many months ago that we brought forward the fact that we can no longer pay those folks that are with us on a part time basis as a contractual labor person. We now have to issue W2s and so this is all part of the evolution of the current fire department into a more professionally staffed, manned and paid entity for the city. So Chief Estes would like to know if you all support that process of him combining them both and bringing them back to council through an ordinance amendment for the standard operating guidelines for the department?
Well, it makes sense to me to to have them all under one, one set of guidelines. They aren't two separate. Do we need to make a motion or just kind of direct him to do that?
Just direction is needed from council as to which way you want us to go.
Yeah, I'm I'm the same. Let's clean it up.
I have the majority of SOGs done. I lack some more that I have to do. So once those are all done, I can give you all a draft copy of all of them, if that's what you like.
Yeah, that was my question. Are we going to be able to see the draft copy?
Yes, I'll give you a draft copy. But but most of the city stuff that they do at town hall, they already cover most of all the, I mean, they cover the finances already. I can't do anything without, I I check with them every time, hey, do I have enough money to do this? So that's, you know, it's checks and balances all the time.
Yeah, those final, that final draft would have to be approved through us, correct? I mean.
Yeah.
Yes. We would have to see.
Y'all would approve the draft and then I'd set it forth and we'd start doing it at the fire station. It'd be something.
Then yes, please.
Comparing the old bylaws would be nice to have too, just to read them.
Oh, yeah, I meant they're they're on the, they're on our website. No, they can be. I'll put them on there.
When we bring it back to council, Scott, put both in the pack.
Okay.
Anything else or no?
Let's go to number three, also our Chief Estes, the emergency services district.
Chief Thompson, can you hear me? It shows it's muted.
Okay, there we go. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now, Chief Thompson?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Hang on one second, we're we're not hearing you yet. Okay. Now you can hear us, can we hear you?
Mic check, one, two, three, four. Hello?
Okay. Uh, chief, after the slide presentation, I will call you on my phone if I have any questions.
Chief, after the slide presentation, I will call you on my phone if I have any questions. So what I have is I've got a slide presentation on the basics of ESD. All right, this is the overview for our council meeting today of ESD, it, it's a very basic overview. It can get very, very in-depth, but this will just be the bare basics of what you need to know about an ESD and what, what they do, how they were formed, why they were formed, about the Board of Commissioners. So, we'll go to the next slide. So, what is an ESD? Well, it's another, it's a political subdivision that can charge you tax, I mean, up to 10 cents per $100 worth of value of your home. It, it is by five different commissioners, board, they're appointed by the commissioner, sport. Now, I left this in here, there are a few counties, Harris Smith, Orange Counties, mostly multi-county ESDs where they are elected. Like I said, they're funded by property tax, not to exceed 10 cents of $100 valuation. So it can go from zero to 10 cents, but not to exceed 10 cents. The, the history of it was the Royal Fire Department Districts, that was approved back in 49. They had a tax cap of 3 cents. After that, they, the special district, let's see, according to the interpretive commentary, the Texas Farm Block supported the creation of special districts to purchase modern fire equipment, to reduce insurance rates mainly in the rural areas. Not so much in the city, but the rural, because they were hurting for equipment and personnel. So they amended it back in November 87 with a tax cap of 10 cents. And you can, once you adopt it, it's within the same year, so. And, why they were created, it's pretty obvious, it's for fire EMS and medical response and other services that we provide like hazmat, recs, cleanups and stuff. So, it would spread it out over the county and the citizens of the city if they so choose to join the ESD in the city. It would be a tax on everybody within that district. Right now, there's a little over 400 known ESDs in Texas. There's more than 200 safety members, and the safety is what regulates and controls the ESDs throughout the state. They're like the Board of Commissioners for the ESDs all over the state. Approximately one-third goes up to nine cents, and I found out today, and it's not on this slide, that from 3 cents to zero, there's about a third of the ESDs. 3 cents and above to 9 cents, it's about another third, and then there's another third that's about 10 cents all over the place. And there's nearly 100 ESDs that also collect the sales tax fund. And we just, well, we'll go here, Wise County right now has two, and that's Wise County ESD 1 and ESD 2. One's in Boyd, two's in Valzora, Boonville area. And then Denton County has two, Parker's got six, about to have seven and eight, I found out today. And Tarrant County has one. So that's just, just in our area. Houston and Barrett County has an abundance of ESDs. The authority and the limitations. First service district created by Texas through the legislative, legislator through the statutes. The legislator derives, derives this authority to create ESDs from the voters through the Texas Constitution. ESDs do not have any powers except what is provided through them by those statutes. And laws that may be enacted, provided for, established, created special districts to provide emergency services and authorized tax and the ad valorem property, not to exceed 10 cents to the $100 valuation. So, basically you got a $500,000 home, you'll have $500 here in taxes. And you can, okay. The medical services, ambulances, Royal Fire Prevention and Control Services and other services authorized by legislation. And you can go to Texas Constitution, Article 111, Section 48E, and you can read more about all of that. Before, they had 775, 776 and 794. Now, as of 2003, everybody is what they call the Chapter 775 ESD. And I didn't get into depth what all that means, I just know that's what it was. The way you get it, the way you're going to create this, is if somebody wants to do it, you're going to have to get it on the, in the ETJ or the city limits, you're going to have to get the, if it's the ETJ or the city limits, you have to have the city's consent to put it on the ballot. If you're incorporating the city and the ETJ. You, you petition it by the county commissioners, you draw an order for election, you draw up the ballot language, canvas selection, and then create, and then order creating the district if it gets passed. So, you get 100 votes, if I'm not mistaken, it's 100 votes through the ETJ and the city in order to get it on the ballot. It goes on the ballot, then you have your vote, gay or male, and it's about that simple. There's no articles of incorporation for ESDs, no bylaws for ESDs, ESDs are local government entities governed by the Texas statutes. Now, the Board of Commissioner, you know, who, who runs the big show? It's appointed by the commissioner, court for two years, must be at least 18 years of age, a resident of the citizen of the state that is, a qualified voter within the district or an owner of land, subject to taxation in that district. The Commissioner's Court shall consider relevant factors and determine individuals to appoint the Emergency Services Commissioners, including, and this is a big one, whether the individuals have knowledge that relates to fire prevention or emergency medical services and to the relevant common practices, policies and practices of the board. So, they're going to look for people that has a knowledge of fire, EMS, hazmat, other services, even up to like somebody that knows insurance, because you deal a lot in the insurance for the ISO ratings. Or is that it? That's it? I will call Chief Thompson and... By the way, Chief Thompson is the, hey Chief? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Chief Thompson, he's District 1 Fire and Rescue in Laverne, they have about 21 full-time, part-time staff and two stations. And he's been doing it for several years down there. And they cover four cities, about, maybe they cover five. So if y'all have any questions, I will relay it to him and he can answer the question.
Let's start with council, do you have any questions for Chief Estes?
Okay, so, since Ms. Mize brought this up, I believe, what happens to the equipment?
From, Chief, they asked what happens to the equipment?
Okay, can they hear me or am I relaying through you?
Uh, let's see if they can hear you this way. Go ahead and speak and I'll see if they can hear you.
So, the equipment would be owned by the city, and it would really be up to the city at that point if they want to donate, if they want to form some sort of contractual obligation where the ESD can purchase that, there's, there's really a myriad of options to dispose of the equipment. What I will say is, the closer you work together with an ESD, the quicker they get started and are able to provide that service. If they have to start from scratch, it's going to take them a while to ramp up. If they already have equipment and the station, that's a really big benefit.
I mean, and taxpayers within the city have paid for that equipment, so they're providing a service for us anyway, correct? The ESD would be?
She is asking that the, the citizens have already paid for that equipment and we're providing a service to them?
Yeah, so that's definitely one way to look at that, that, you know, the citizens have really already paid for this equipment. So you're really just giving it back to them just under another, another entity.
With the ESD taking care of all the maintenance from that day forward.
Yeah, so, once the ESD is established, the city is basically hands-free of the fire department, with the exception of, of any citizens that may be on the board. But yes, there is no, no obligation that the city would have to fund in any way an Emergency Services District. That would be between the two entities if they wanted to do that. For instance, we cover the city of Laverne, and the city of Laverne does not provide us a dollar in, in any compensation whatsoever for our service, but the citizens of the city do pay the 10 cent, you know, our, our tax rate is 0.89 cents. But the city does not contribute anything to the fire department directly.
Okay, and the tax that, that we, or that the ESD assesses, whether it's 3 cents or 10 cents, that's everyone across the board, whether they're frozen or not, correct?
Did you hear that?
That is correct, so, property, property values are frozen. The ESDs do have, and I believe this is the question, the ESD does have the option to offer the same discounts to veterans, to disabled, to homestead, that's all part of your tax package when you figure out, figure your tax rate. You have the ability to give those discounts.
Can you tell us, Chief, if any ESDs do that in the state of Texas?
Offer the, the homestead exemption and things like that?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yes.
I know that the first like four or five years here, we were offering early payment discounts. We were offering a couple of other disabled veteran, things like that. I think at this point, it's just the disabled veterans, because we're, we're growing. I, I, looking at your map, very similar. We're growing rapidly and we're having a very hard time, you know, expanding our services to keep up with the growing population and the growing call volume. Because it looks like, you know, judging by your map, that that's coming pretty quick for you guys.
Yes, it is, we have several homes coming into the city and possibly businesses later. Any other questions?
Chief Estes, you mentioned that, you know, it would require a city and ETJ petition. Now I guess folks that are outside of that area, they're just coming along without any...
No, they have to, Chief Thompson, now the city has to say that they want the petition for the ESD, correct? And the people in the ETJ, they also, do you have to get two separate ballots of the ETJ and the citizens? Or is it just one overall for the 100 signatures?
So, the, the process would start out with defining a boundary of what the territory would be. And then if that incorporates a city and the ETJ, you would just get a resolution from the city that they would say that they agree to participate in the election, or basically, essentially they're allowing their citizens to participate in an election for an ESD. You only need 100 signatures, verified property owners and registered voters, they have to be both. Two that are within the defined boundary. So you can have a few out of the city, a few in the ETJ, the rest in the county, as long as it's all within one boundary.
Got it, explain it?
And that's, that's for the creation of an ESD. If the ESD was ever to annex another territory, it's 50 registered voters at that point.
Of the place you're going to annex, correct?
Correct, yes, correct.
The petition, isn't that the grassroots, it's your folks, our folks are going to have to get out and petition.
The people within the city and the ETJ will have to have 100 signatures in order to put it on the ballot.
And define boundaries...
So if, if you include a portion of the county, you know, it's one, it's one district. It doesn't really take into account the ESD, the, the ETJ or the city on its own. It's 100 voters in the entire district, whatever the proposed district would include.
So whatever the ESD district boundaries include, you have to get 100 signatures from that.
That's correct.
Now I'm presuming we're looking at Rome, which would include our jurisdiction, which is, is really kind of weird here. I've got the map that I got from the county. You know, the way that it comes around and it's got to have defined, and I'm presuming that by defined, there's got to be a survey or some sort of thing that's been done when this was established to begin with, maybe in 2008.
Yeah, so it's, the, the ETJ is defined on that map. Now, we do cover part of the county which is over towards North Star. And I did find out today, since it butts up to Fort Worth CTJ, North Star is, it's not in our ETJ, that we cannot incorporate that within our district.
Okay.
Because it's...
Well, what I'm talking about was what he said about the defined, defined boundaries. And so we've got to have something on file that says, okay, we're going to, we're going to go 100 feet this way, and then we're going to go west, and then we're going to go 100 feet that way. So I'm presuming that we've got something like you would to plaque, do we have something in our records with that?
I don't know about the records here, I know you can go to the county over there where I went, and you can get all the maps.
I try, I've got the map that I got, and this is part of the bigger map that I got from the county.
So typically, you would go, if, if you want to do it exactly right, you would go to a surveyor and you would get a meets and bounds of the territory.
Okay.
And you would include that with the petition. So you would have a cover sheet that says what the petition is about, then you would have the map with the meets and bounds, and then you would get the signatures, then you turn that into the county. They verify that the signatures are with, indeed within the meets and bounds, that they are taxpayers and property owners both. And then at that point, then it goes to county commissioners, county court decides if they want to put this on the ballot. County court funds the initial election. And, so it's a, it's a bit of a process, but it's, it's definitely a valuable way to fund your fire department.
Who has the authorization to commission that survey, since it is, it's involved, county, it involves city?
Yeah, so if you're going to do meets and bounds, we just did one for an annexation, it cost us about $3,000. You know, that's, that's going to be up to the city if, if you want to foot that bill, if you want to work with county commissioners to foot that bill. But the elec, so that's kind of a give or take between the two entities. But by law, the county is the one that funds the initial election.
Well, yeah, they fund the election, but I'm talking about, you know, the preliminary steps to get it there.
Yes, and I've seen, I've, I'm just saying that a meets and bounds is a very legal way to do it. I've seen ESDs do a hand-drawn map that, you know, states it goes up Highway 19. You know, turn right on Highway 46, turn right on, you know, County Road 242, and that's how they describe it. And that's worked, so you don't have to go do meets and bounds.
You don't have to, okay, you can, actually you can take the, take the map that was, that was done by the county then.
Yeah, now, once the election is, if, once county commissioners agree to the election and they put it on the ballot, then the county would be responsible for creating those meets and bounds, because you do have to have that for the election, but you do not have to have it for the petition.
Okay, all right.
Now, can the boundary change after you petition it?
So, once the, once the boundary, and I'm going off our annexation, we've been presented with a territory, a defined territory. And we have accepted the petition, the, the signatures are validated. We can exclude any part of the territory that we don't feel is beneficial to us. We're not going to do that, but yes, you do have the opportunity to exclude, you cannot include more territory without new signatures, but you can exclude a certain area.
Because in a perfect world, we would want as many rooftops as possible, correct? I mean, that's...
Yeah, ESDs, they, they don't pay off unless you have rooftops, correct, Chief Thompson? I mean, the rooftops is what pays your money.
The rooftops, there's two, you know, there's two methods of funding the ESD. One is through the ad valorem property tax, the other is through... The other is through sales tax, if there is sales tax available, and you do do that as a, as a separate election. So the businesses and the, you know, it's based on property, yes.
Because our boundaries, this, it's really funny because we got a whole peninsula that couldn't be 10 feet wide, that goes off one direction and then it comes back down and it abuts to another district and then I'm not sure what their mental status was when they created this.
Yes, there is, especially down 114, there's just fingers everywhere.
Yeah, and then over here, it's like a stair step with either Denton or Tarrant on that. And here's your peninsula over here that goes into, that's got to be with Tarrant and Newark.
Can you ask the chief if he has worked with an ESD that is already in an improvement district like the one that's just the other side of the highway?
Did you hear that, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay, you're talking about RBR?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever worked with one within an ESD where they're, they're building a subdivision right now? It's about a 10,000 subdivision, about, not quite, but maybe close to 7,000 is going to be in our ETJ that we cover. The other 3,000 is going to be in Newark, which is a volunteer fire department on the other side of us, butts up to us. Have you ever gone in or worked with the ESD that had that happening at the time? Where, right now, in the Free Union side, there's only about probably eight, nine people that has houses over there. Blue Stem has about 60 something houses and, but that's all they have at this point. I don't know how, it's going to take them several years to grow it out to 10,000.
My concern is, we're getting calls routinely that people are already upset when they're buying in the improvement district and they don't realize the tax rate that they're paying, and you're going to add to that if they are in the district that you set that boundary. So I'm just asking, has he worked with any that already has that type of a configuration?
Did you hear that?
So just to clarify, so there's a small portion of a subdivision that's covered by a volunteer fire department now, and you're considering if you draw boundaries, maybe including that in your own, is that...
No, no, no. What it is, is they're talking about their taxes they're already paying at this time over there, or I would say complaining about the taxes at this time.
Okay.
We are, we are in an area that has Northwest ISB, which is one of the higher tax rates in the, in the entire state. So, and they just passed probably one of the biggest bond elections in the history of Texas. So people are pretty much tired of taxes. So have you gone through that with any ESDs that you know, trying to fight the tax rates that's already here?
Well, I mean, that's anywhere. Nobody wants new taxes, and that's one of those things that you just kind of must consider. Do you want to include that territory if you think there's going to be made opposition to it? And that's where the town hall meetings kind of come into play. And that's where the, you know, the people that might be heading this petition up might have that town hall meeting and discuss with them, do you want to be included in this territory for fire protection? Yes, it's going to increase your taxes up to 10 cents and let them decide, do they want to be included and not or not? That would be, that would be how I would pursue that personally.
Now, we talked about up to 10 cents a few times. What are your thoughts on when you do, if you do form an ESD, what's your recommendation for the commission, the board setting the tax rate at to operate on?
So I'm sure the city's pretty familiar with the 86 legislature and the SB2 that they put in place and the rate, you know, the stipulations of you can only grow your, your revenue by three and a half percent. ESDs are basically under that same rule under SB2. I personally, the recommendation would be to start that without knowing what your tax base actually is and what the defined territory would be. It is much easier to go down than it is to go up. So your first year, the recommendation is probably to be as, as high as you can, you think you can take it or stand to be at because you can lower it as much as you want in one year. But if you start out at 3 cents, which is virtually impossible to run a fire department on, in order to get where you need to be, it's going to take years and years to do that. On the, on the flip side, if you started out at 10 cents and you decided, wow, we only need 5 cents to run this fire department, you can drop a nickel in a year and it's very easy to do. But if you try to gain that nickel back, very, very difficult to do.
Okay.
Counsel, have any other questions? I have had some requests from the audience that they may have some questions if the mayor doesn't object. Okay, I've also had a request to repeat the question for those that are online and listening, so bear with us as we go through that process. So the question is, how do they decide where the station is for the ESD and how does that affect homeowners' insurance?
Did you hear that, Chief?
No, sir, sorry.
Okay. How do they decide where the ESD goes and how's that going to affect the homeowners' insurance within the city and out in the county?
The ESD, as far as like a fire station?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's up to the board. That's up to the five board members. Hopefully, you know, the fire chief takes into consideration the ISO and does some research and decides the, you know, the best place and you get the most, you get the most bang for the buck where you place the station. But on the other hand, you're limited to land, you know, where can you put that as well? We're fighting that battle right now. We need to create another station on Southern Springs, and we're having difficulty just finding the land to do that. But, but to answer the question, the simple answer is the, the ESD board decides where the fire stations go.
Now, what about the insurance, affecting the insurance rates?
The ISO rating?
No, no, well, they want to know what do their insurance rates, which if you have a fire station closer to their property with proper water, the rate will go down.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. Five miles is the, is the standard.
Okay. She wants to know if the, say the nearest fire station was five miles from the city, would that cause the people within the city's insurance rate to go up on top of paying, say, the 10 cents?
Well, you already have a station in the city, correct?
Yes.
So I do not, if I was a board member, I would, would not give that up. I would try and work with the city to maintain that fire station.
You haven't seen our station.
Yeah. You definitely, you know, the, the goal of any good ESD is to, that's, most people will, you know, the statistics are like 97% of the population will never use your service as a fire department. In other words, 97% of the people's house will not burn down. However, like 88% of the population buy insurance, and that is one way the fire department can give back to the citizens, is through the ISO rating. And maintaining those fire stations within those five-mile radiuses should be an ultimate goal across the board. And those stations don't have to be manned. You know, we have two that are just metal buildings with a fire truck in them that are manned by volunteers when they can, but they still get credit for being five miles from a fire station, and it's very, very cheap to do that.
Right. So you put your reserve button over there and run it if you have to.
Yep.
Okay.
So the question is, the city's current tax rate is .437815, I believe, and the conversation is that the 10 cent rate would be about a quarter of the current 43 cents roughly that Rome charges, and you want to know how much of the current fire department's bill is paid by the city. So in the research that we've been doing on the budget that we intend to talk to counsel about this evening, out of the general fund for the city of Rome, we're transferring about $136,000 to the fire department each year. The fire department also generates their own revenue through cost recovery tools when they respond to an accident. They are also, through ILA agreements, receiving money from Tarrant County and Wise County to provide their services, so that also defrays the cost of the police, excuse me, of the fire department. So the citizens of Rome are not bearing the entire cost for the fire department. Did that answer your question? Well, as far as the percentage, we haven't calculated it down, whether it's 1%, 2%, I don't have that number for you today. I think, Mr. Easton, you'll find after tonight's budget presentation that there's a long list of items not being funded by the city. I don't anticipate, unless counsel makes a decision to hold everything at status quo the way it is today, that the current tax rate for the city of Rome would go down.
Any other questions to the chief?
I would have thought that some of the costs would have been offset, you know, sharing it among the district as opposed to, you know, the cost with the city. I would have thought that that would be offset somewhat by what tax, Rome taxpayers are paying in.
I'm not saying there wouldn't be a savings, Mayor. What I'm saying is that we have a long list of things to address, that even if we're not paying towards the fire department, we've got to put that to streets, to additional personnel in a variety of areas, to infrastructure improvements, to just, there's a long list of things that we need to address in the future.
Is there any more questions, Chief Thompson, so he can... Yep, one more. They're a separate fire department. We do it, we do that now. They would still be Newark Volunteer Fire Department. Yes, unless they wanted to join us, and I can tell you they will not. Yeah, it's about 50, no...
So, hang on just a second, Scott. Let me repeat the question. The question was brought up, are we just looking at the boundaries to be laying over the city limits and within the ETJ that currently exists for the city of Rome, which is approximately 19 square miles?
Our, well, our area that we cover is 50, 54, 57 square miles is what we cover for the fire department is the area that we cover, and that would be the area that we'd be asking for the boundary of the ESD to be at. Now, Cottondale, Paradise, and Salt Creek, they went to get the boundaries changed through the commissioner. They had some change, and this is one instance where they saw a piece of property and they, right down the middle of the property with no roads, no gates, anything, cut it off. Part was Decatur, part was Paradise. So they said, well, this is silly, said, we'll take that area in, the 75 acres in, and we'll give up 120 something acres to Decatur. Well, that didn't sit well with Decatur. For whatever reason, they got more property, maybe it's where the property is at is the reason why they're upset. So, yeah, it's, you can move some boundaries around, but that's going to be up to the commissioner to do that.
So then to your question, Mrs. B. Kraft, the boundary would extend beyond the ETJ?
Yeah.
Because we don't, ours is not 54 miles. Other questions?
So going to an ESD, it wouldn't necessarily see if they put the map up now. It wouldn't necessarily be the boundaries right now that's been, that is set up through the county.
Yes, it would be...
It'd be a larger boundary?
No, it would be the same boundary. We're not asking to go out and get Newark, we're not asking to get east Wise. We're just asking to take what we have now.
That's 54 square miles, huh?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Thanks.
Chief, wanted to know about if, what's the downsides to ESD?
The downsides to ESD?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're, I mean, you're, you're kind of on your own, for one. There are, you know, you are competing, there are, there are some, I guess, competition between, as you just kind of said, Decatur and everybody else, you know, they want territory, everybody. The larger your ESD, the more efficient you can operate and the less burden you have on your, your per capita. But really and truly, there's, there's not a ton of downside from the fire service perspective that the state recognized the volunteer fire service was going away a long time ago, and this was their fix for that. And this is a very, very good way for small cities to fund a quality fire department that they would not otherwise be able to do. And you're seeing in those numbers that you presented, you know, we're over 400, we will soon outnumber city fire departments, which was unthought of before. But your city right now is not the only one considering going ESD to fund their fire department.
Now, what about the downsides to the actual city itself?
Well, the city would lose control theoretically of the fire department, but I guess the city would have to decide, is that a bad thing or a good thing? Because now they're not funding it. They're getting the service, they're getting a better quality fire department more than likely, and they're losing the headache of budgeting for it and the maintenance and all of the other HR headaches that go with it. That falls on the political subdivision of the ESD itself. So that's really, you know, a question for the city itself, you know, is that appealing or not to them?
Okay.
I would also say in addition to that, this is something I've experienced in other cities I've worked for, is your residents often come to identify with your public safety individuals, be it police or fire. And when you remove them to some extent from the community, that's a missing piece. You won't have that identity that we have a Rome fire department anymore. You won't see that on the trucks, on their uniforms, anything to that nature. And by losing direct oversight of fire or police or any other, you no longer get to dictate which way things go and what, what takes priority. So the city residents, those who vote, the council, all of that, if this is pursued, will have to consider a multitude of issues. It's not just as simple as saying, well, we're shifting one tax burden from this to that and spreading the load. There are a lot of other things to consider in this conversation.
I just have a quick question. I've noticed, though, you've got, this is kind of, I'm addressing Rodney Holmes because you have an ESD located there in Boyd, but every now and then, I do see a Boyd fire truck.
They still are marked ESD.
Okay.
The original fire trucks that the city did hire.
How's it work out in Boyd for the ESD?
ESDs are major, my boy.
Okay.
Express, fast, ground to everybody. Eighty percent of their calls are outside the city limits, watching citizens inside the city.
Do you share any of your sales tax with them?
No.
Mr. Knight?
I mean, it's all down in Roma, which is not, because it's a stretch, I mean, it's a, that was like, compared to the business, it's just, I can speak to it, because I'm just, I love the idea of having a home, starting up, wanting to, you know, control, and then it becomes, and two simple things, and the country, and that's really important.
I guess I would answer that through the lens of, as I mentioned before, there are a lot of unfunded issues in the city of Rome. So I can't guarantee you that if you take the load, whether it's one or two cents on that tax rate from what we fund the fire department for, and you move it to an ESD... that tax rate, from what we fund the fire department for, and you move it to an ESD, if it's voted in, and it's spread out across the entirety of the district, I can't say to you that the tax rate for Rome would go down. Because we would need to look through the lens of what's not being met. The 10 cents does apply, and it will be up to that district then, whether they give the over 65, the tax freeze, the disability, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how many do that, but it will affect the residents in Rome. Their taxes would go up to some extent regardless of their status in that, in that area. I understand now, but I can't answer that question because I'm, I don't have any experience in that. Maybe Mayor Holmes can answer that question?
I don't know if that's anything new, but the Boyd fire department was an ESD under one, but I do know that about a year ago, our county chief, they were able to get our highest rate of loans.
Thank you, Chief Thompson.
Did you guys have a, I guess, did you guys not have a hazmat truck, and then do you have one now?
I am not sure.
Because I know...
In that ESD, it's their own set.
Okay. Yeah, no, because us getting a hazmat truck would significantly lower those insurance rates, too.
It could have been that.
Yeah.
So what happens 10 years down the road, you decide to opt out of this?
If the city decides to opt out of the ESD, the city itself, by state law, has to provide fire protection and emergency services for that city. Means they would have to form their own fire department again, purchase all the equipment again, and start a fire department. Yes. Yeah. You would have to pay a percentage, not the whole thing, but you'd have to pay a percentage back to the ESD for what they're losing.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you can go, yes, but it's going to cost the city a lot of money. Well, you have a, you have to have 100 signatures, like you said, within the boundary you draw. It doesn't matter if there's one out there and 99 here, it doesn't matter. If they vote for it and it goes, they're in it, they have to pay it. No.
It'd be in our district. It'd be on the district.
Yeah. 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 It's emergency service district, it's not Rome, it's the district itself. Right. And I can tell you, if you try to get it on this November election, you will not have time at all to prepare for it. You will not have time.
The education process alone, it's much like the property tax reduction that we're currently using sales tax for, that I want to talk to council about tonight, that we've also talked to council about, the half a percent that we send to the county. That's a complicated conversation, and it's not as simple as just saying, your tax is over here, and your entrance is going to go down, and then your taxes over here are going to change slightly. It will take a process, and I think we're probably too late in the year to get that on the November ballot. It would have to be probably next May. And it's not just city residents voting.
And the thing is, normally you want to get it in the May ballot. This year, there's nothing big going on in the November election, but you are going to have primaries in the May. That would be a terrible time to run it. And then the November would be a terrible time to run it, because that's going to be the presidential election.
Primaries would be in March.
Or March, yeah.
The primaries are in March, and then the city election.
But...
The county may elect to put it on the November ballot.
Yeah, if they do, that's a terrible...
Include everybody that's in there.
And if they do, everybody I've ever talked to says that's the worst time in the world to go is during a presidential election.
So that's one of the other issues that you talked about, is the city, your city government wouldn't drive the process. The county would drive the process, I believe, from there. So I don't have very much experience in this particular area. We can certainly learn, we've learned a lot already, but that would not be within our The question was, who pays for the election? And I thought Chief Thompson said it was the county.
It's the county, yes. But most people that try to go for election, that just on their own, and try to do it on their own, fail. You can go to Parker County and ask them. They had professionals come in and run their, I guess you would call it a campaign, for ESD, and it's tens, tens of thousands of dollars. It could be up to $30,000 at least, just to run a campaign. Because you don't want to walk in and just thinking you're going to go in there and go, okay, we're going to have an ESD. Doesn't work that way. There's a lot of preparation, there's a lot of town meetings, a lot of meetings at the fire station setting out in the bay, talking about it. It just doesn't happen overnight. It's a long gone out process.
The question that was asked for those online was, how does the fire department feel about going to an ESD?
I've worked at both sides. I mean, I've worked in municipalities, I've worked ESDs. Yes, there probably would be more money in ESDs, but you have to have rooftops, you have to have sales tax. If you don't have the rooftops, you're not going to get the tax dollars. So you have 10,000 homes in RVR over here, but like I said, there's only eight homes or nine homes on the reunion side, 60-something on that side. That's not enough to just say, oh, we're going to have millions of dollars. That's not going to happen. Now, if they were filled up, RVR alone itself, with 10,000 homes, would probably give the ESD between $4 and $5 million a year.
Well, that's a paid on property also.
Yeah.
But there's no houses on it, you're still collecting tax on property.
Yeah, but you have a lot that costs $100,000 compared to a house that costs $600,000. That's a big, huge difference. So, yeah. Yeah. That's, yeah, it's a, yeah, but it's a big difference in having a half a million dollar home or a million dollar home to having a $100,000 lot. Big difference. So don't let people for you, you have to have rooftops in order to get ESD going. And you have to charge 10 cents, and you have to not give exemptions for the first few years, just so you can have your copper, your savings account, in order to operate after that. Boyd did a great job, Mr. Cash, when I was there, his chief, he was a wonderful man. He was tight with his pennies, and we had a lot of money in our savings account because of Mr. Cash. And I don't know what it's like now, but he did a fantastic job, because that's what he did. He just kept shrinking it back, shrinking it back, shrinking it back. And then when I had to go ask for a brand-new tanker for $300-something thousand, he had a heart attack, so, because we wrecked one. But that's what you got to do the first few years of ESD. You can't give discounts, you got to go 10 cents, you got to put your money back for any day, and then you draw back to 8 cents, 6 cents, whatever it is, and then reap the benefits of having houses. But if you don't have them, you're behind the eight ball from the start. Me, myself, I'll work at either one. I'd like being the fire chief for the city of Rome. I would love to see the city of Rome become the second full-time paid fire department in Wise County. That's my goal. Not ESD, but the city of Rome. Either way, I'll be the, hopefully I'll be the chief either way, and wherever, wherever comes my way, I'll head that direction and go. I'd love to see the city of Rome become a full-time paid fire department.
Yeah, but you have seniors right now struggling just to put food on their table after buying their medication. And you going to hit them with this type of tax?
Huh? I didn't hear you.
I know. You got seniors right now struggling to put food on their table after buying their medication for the month, and you're wanting to hit them with this kind of tax?
No, I'm not saying I want to do that. I'm saying I want to have...
Well, you just did. You're saying you can't give them exceptions.
I said, if we went ESD, my preference is to stay the city of Rome fire department and continue to grow this department within the city and be the second full-time fire department. If you go ESD in order to get your money, where you have to have it to operate, because you won't have money for the first 14 months, 16 months, depending on when the election comes in, you have to put money back. So yes, people have to make sacrifices if they want an ESD, and that's one of the sacrifices to start with. I'm not saying I want that. I'm saying I want to keep the fire department with the city of Rome, is what I'm saying. But if we go ESD, you're going to have to make sacrifices, and you're going to have to not give discounts, you're going to have to go 10 cents in order to put money back, and then two years, three years, five years down the road, then you discount it and give everybody their deductions.
I just can't see that. So I hope it stays city of Rome, because you're going to have too many people losing their house, dying of starvation, or having to skip their medication.
But it's not up to me, it's up to the people that vote.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm just telling you, I can't go this route.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, if you go ESD, that's, that's the way you got to put money back.
Okay.
The inflation's not getting lower, it's getting higher, and everything possible.
I know.
A fire truck used to cost $500,000, now it costs $100,000.
And seniors are not getting any raises.
Ultimately, it would be their decision anyway, because they would vote on it.
If they passed the ESD, they would be included in the district, yes. Any other questions? Yes, sir? No? You're good? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. MDD, update, Boyd Mayor Rodney Holmes.
Mayor, council, staff, public. I'm here tonight, I'm the mayor for the city of Boyd. Sorry, our city administrator, Dwayne Taylor, could not be here. He's actually presenting the budget to the municipal development district tonight. We, I have been on the council since 2008. I started off on the parks board, I became mayor in 2016. And probably my biggest accomplishment, the city of Boyd, was forming a municipal development district. In 1990, and you hear a lot of conflict on this, you even hear a lot of conflict at the county. When the state comptroller's office raised the sales tax rate to 8 and 1/4, from 7 and 1/4, there was one cent out there that cities, ESDs, the county could capture, and Wise County, and the city of Boyd decided that they were going to capture that 1%, and the county was going to take half a cent, and the city was going to take half a cent for property tax relief. It doesn't go towards emergency services, it doesn't go towards streets, it doesn't go in the general fund, it goes to property tax relief. And basically what that does, the city of Rome has that now. You have a half a cent of your sales tax goes to property, property tax relief. Basically what it does is if the city of Rome collects half a million dollars a year is your half cent of sales tax, that goes to property tax relief. So basically what the tax assessor collector does is if your operating budget is $1 million, and you collect half a million in sales tax, he only allows you to collect a half a million for your budget. So that lowers your non-revenue tax rate. That keeps it down. I'll use an example, Wise County. A few years ago, when the state comptroller's office changed the way that they collected sales tax, so right now, if you sit at your house here in the city limits of Rome, and you order off Amazon, the sales tax that's collected goes to the city of Rome. That's why you see these numbers in the Wise County Messenger where the sales tax is going through the roof. Well, that's because you're collecting it locally. I know, I find quite a bit, I fund quite a bit for the city of Boyd through Amazon and eBay and all those things. So basically what happens is, over the last few years, the county has lowered their tax rate 37 cents to 35 cents, 34 cents to 30 cents, or whatever it is right now, I believe it's 30 cents. The reason they didn't do that out of their own good hearts, they did that because that was the rate that needed to be lowered, the tax dollars they could collect, because they were collecting so much more in sales tax, which is great. You figure it lowers property taxes. But you get to a point where a city grows to where you're starting to collect so much sales tax that it's actually hurting your tax rate and your tax revenue, and you, as a council, are struggling every year to lower that tax rate, because that's all the taxman will let you collect. Okay? Well, that's what, that's all well and good, if you collect half your budget in sales tax. But what happens when you have a big economic downturn? Or what happens when, God forbid, Walmart and Decatur burns, and they're down for a year, and the county's now relying on half, that half cent of sales tax for half of their budget? And then all of a sudden, they've lost that. You're just about bankrupt your county, you're just about bankrupt your city. So what I'm trying to get at is, when I became mayor, the real reason that I looked at a municipal development district was, is our parks. You can use that half cent of sales tax for property tax relief, you can use it for an economic development corporation, you can use it for a municipal development district. We did not go with the economic development corporation, we wanted to go with the municipal development district. I'm, yeah. And the reason we did that is because, Boyd Youth Association, 90% of the kids that play in the BYA, their parents don't live in the city limits. And we were doing 100% of the park maintenance out of our ad valorem taxes from the people that did live in the city limits. I didn't think that was fair. And BYA was always, well, we can't raise our rates, we can't pay the city anything, you know, but what are we going to do? It's for the kids. So a way to fund that was to look at a municipal development district. So what we were able to do in 2017 was, is I'd be able to educate my citizens that if we were to repeal that half cent of sales tax that went to property tax relief and form a municipal development district, it would be a great benefit to the city. Because a municipal development district can fund your parks, it can fund economic development, it can fund new infrastructure and new developments or anything like that, any industrial complexes that you have coming, it can help to fund that. It can really benefit the city. So now, we collect about a half a million dollars a year in the municipal development district. And what our municipal development district does, besides economic development, we have a, for economic development, right now, we're working on a program put together for incentives for businesses to come to Boyd. We're using Greg Last, who used to be the economic development coordinator for the city of Southlake. He's a consultant that we use. And then, they also fund our parks. All of our park maintenance and our park improvements is done using that half cent of sales tax. But what that did for the BYA is, now, when those people bring their kids into Boyd, and they go to the ballgame, and then they get done, and they go eat at Those Chili's, well, half cent of that sales tax that they paid at Those Chili's is now helping to fund our parks. That's how we do these events. We just had our big Boyd Bash that we do every year. That was about $10,000, but that was all funded with that half cent of sales tax. So our citizens had to decide, do I pay a little bit more, not get that reduction in property taxes, to be able to have more of a benefit for the city? So basically, that's what we have done. I would say it was our, my greatest accomplishment so far. I don't know where our city would be without our municipal development district. They fund movies in the park, they fund trunk or treat. When we wanted to build a veterans' park, they went and borrowed the money to buy the property, to do it, to expand our parks. It's basically just been a big benefit for us. The thing about a municipal development district is you can also include your ETJ. But in order for the city of Rome to be able to utilize this and regain that half cent of sales tax, you would have to start a petition to get it on the ballot, to recall that half cent of sales tax that goes to property tax relief, and form a municipal development district. We were able to do that in the city of Boyd, and we got it passed. And like the ESD, it was all about education. It was about educating our citizens on what we were trying to do. And they decided that, instead of paying that, saving that little bit in, in property taxes, that they would rather have better parks, and they would rather have events, and they would rather have economic development. Our municipal development district right now has a property improvement program. In our business district, which is basically downtown, if a... In our business district, which is basically downtown, if a property owner wants to redo their storefront, the MDD will fund, will match a grant up to $10,000. So if they wanted to do $20,000 worth of improvements to their storefront to make downtown look better, the MDD will match $10,000 for them. Of course, there's guidelines that the MDD puts in place. What's it going to look like? It's engineered and everything like that. But we've had several businesses, especially this year, right now, we're getting our downtown kind of redone. Salt and Light Salon has come in. And the same people that own it have purchased the old library and the old hair salon place that was basically falling down. And when those are done, it's going to look just like the Salt and Light Salon. And that's bringing businesses to our downtown, which increases our sales tax, which helps us out down the road. Go Go Gumbo, all the way to the bake shop. That's all tore off the front of their buildings because they're putting in a new awning, redoing the front of the buildings. They're getting the matching grant from the municipal development district. So Amanda had asked me to come and talk tonight about that, tell you what we've done in the city of Boyd and answer any questions that you may have.
Isn't it, you know, I've talked to Greg Yarrenton, we talked about the MDD at some point. And I've just, I almost looked at it as being almost a rainy day fund. You're putting it back because it's, you're not just limited to that. I mean, if you had an emergency street repair that had to get done, could it, could that not come out of the municipal development?
No, but, but, but what you can do, let me use the city of Newark as an example.
Okay.
I happened to be at one of their meetings.
They did that, they discovered that they had an MDD. You know, and that's what covered the other, the cost of that park when she got the grant.
Yes, I'll, I'll explain that to you. What they did is they formed it in about 2014.
Right.
But the, the person that was in charge of getting that forum left the city. And they really didn't know what they could do with that money. Meanwhile, they had that half cent building up.
Yeah.
In their accounts. And I was at a meeting one night and they had gotten a grant to drill a new well. And they didn't have the money to run the electric to the new well. And they were like, well, we've got this brand new well, but we can't use it because we don't have $32,000 to run the electric to there. And they couldn't find it. And I said, well, don't you have a municipal development district? And they're like, yes, but we can't use it for that. I said, well, you can do a budget amendment. And because the municipal development district can fund your park maintenance, how much is in your park maintenance budget? $35,000? Okay, let the municipal development district fund that. And you can do a budget amendment and move that $35,000 out of parks over to Public Works. And there's your money to put your electric in. So there is ways that you can work it. I mean, you cannot use a municipal development district funds for street repair. You can go in and build a new street in an industrial complex for anything that you're expanding your city, anything new. Like say, we use it all the time if a developer, say when O'Reilly's Auto Parts came in and we require a 12 inch water line in front of them. Well, they had to replace the water line on their property with a 12 inch. Well, we wanted bigger than that. We wanted an 18. So the municipal development district could fund the difference in the cost. So you can use it for things like that. We've used it for parks up till now, a lot of it in property improvement programs. But we're starting to move ahead and educate ourselves with Mr. Last out of Southlake on economic development because municipal development can be used for a lot of things. It's just like, almost just like an economic development corporation, but you can do other things with that money also. So you can have Easter egg hunts. You can have movies in the park. You can fund all kinds of stuff, events for your public. Any other questions?
I'm so glad you came.
You're welcome. I appreciate the invite, being here. Anytime.
So this process to get it on the ballot, do you, you just put it on the ballot and it's, say, go vote for the MDD? Educate your community?
Yeah, educate, educate your community on what you're trying to do. One of the things we struggle with is we have a brand new development you hear about. It's been in the works since 2017, Spring Hill South, which is now a D.R. Horton development. It's their number one selling development in North Texas. Well, when that developer came and talked to us in early 2017, the Wise County messenger printed that he was talking about the development and we were talking about forming a municipal development district. And our public automatically assumed that we were using that municipal development district to put the infrastructure in that new development. And it was very confusing and, and we had to work really hard to educate our citizens that those are two completely separate things. That development's going to pay for its own infrastructure through a public improvement district. But when they hear MDD, PID, TIRZ, it's all the same to them. They just automatically assume ESD, it's automatically more taxes. So.
Any change in that regard is always going to be an education process. And it's something that would require quite a bit of communication, town hall meetings, things of that nature to help get the word out so people understand the benefit because any change is difficult.
Any other questions? Yes, mayor? No, actually I did most of that myself. And, and because it was on a May election, it passed 53 to 47. It passed by six votes. We had less than 100 people vote because it was on a, a May election. And I, and I'll add to the fact on that, there are certain things that you want on a city election. And then there are certain things that you want to fall on a presidential election. If you're trying to pass beer and wine, you want that to fall on a presidential election. If you want to pass an ESD or something like that, you probably want that to fall on a city election. So you have to manipulate the system a little bit. I know I just said that on public record, that's probably not good.
It's a true statement. It's a very true statement.
Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
I think we had one more question.
Oh, yes. Yes.
So the comment was that in Newark, they've used the MDD to help fund matching grants for park expansion and improvements, which takes the burden off the general budget or general fund.
Yes, you can get a, what they did, and, and I was in contact with your mayor, with Crystal over there. She called me to ask me, can we do this? And I said, yes, you can do that. You have to convince your council to do that. But they, they got a 300,000 or $150,000 grant through Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and they used 150,000 out of their municipal development fund. Because they really hadn't used anything since they've been collecting it, so it's just been building up. So they had that money sitting in there and that's what they use to match the funds with. Yes, ma'am? Yes. It's, it's, you're going to, you're going to pay a little more, probably? Well, your tax rate will probably remain status quo as your sales tax increases. Your tax rate won't be, they won't be forced to lower their tax rate. Because eventually you get into a never ending downward spiral as you get businesses in here. If you guys get a Walmart, then the next thing you know, and it's going to be great for the homeowners, but you're going to be paying 10 cent in ad valorem taxes because it's lowered it that much. And that's what I was trying to use the example of the county. That's why they've had to lower their tax rate is because they're collecting millions of dollars a year in tax rate, which comes from the city of Rome, city of Boyd, city of Decatur and city of Bridgeport. But that's another subject for another day. And it's, goes to property tax relief, besides what they tell you. You can go to the comptroller's website and look it up and it will tell you that in October the 1st of 1990, that that half cent went towards property tax relief. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, mayor, for coming. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I love you. All right, let's do the final budget discussion with the city administrator.
Okay, council, I'm going to have Carvin Atkins. He's going to take his exit stage left as this is not the most exciting topic for the city attorney. And I'll give Shayna just a second to, it looks like it's not exciting for a lot of folks. So we're going to talk about the budget and kind of build on the conversation that we had during the, oh, no, ma'am. Don't let me go. Okay, thank you. That we had during the budget retreat itself. You will see that there, Shayna, I'm not good at this. Yeah. We're going to go ahead and jump to the next slide because this is not my forte. One of the things that we talked about at the budget retreat was the fact that we needed to take our budget through the next iteration of development. It's been progressing over the last five to seven years as you've had various city administrators in the position. And so I'm hopeful that this will provide some more information and a more in-depth look at the numbers as it relates to the city of Rome and what we're using those tax dollars for. You will see that on this slide deck, it talks about the certified values for the last three years, which indicates basically the expansion that we currently have in the tax base. If you look at the final number in 2324, we just received the certified roll that we're now sitting at about $273 million worth of valuation, which shows growth from last year's fiscal year to this one of 22%, which happens to also be the same growth rate that we had from 2122 to 2223. We've had two years worth of 22% growth in that certified tax roll or that tax base. However, if you look at that over the last three years, that's a 57% increase. So Rome is growing and we are either attracting more businesses, the values are going up, we're receiving more homes. So it is part of the conversation that we will have as it relates to the budget itself. There is a note there on what a local tax base is because several people are not necessarily, don't spend their day looking at municipal budgets. So that's basically your certified taxable value with the new improvements and it's multiplied by the tax rate that is set by the city council each year.
Thank you, Shayna.
This look will show you the certified taxable values to build on the conversation from the previous chart back to 2012 forward. In the past 10 years, we've had a significant increase in that tax base value. If you look at the far left, it was about 142 million. And as I mentioned today, it's at 277 million. Next slide. Now, interestingly enough, if you start to look at our tax rate history itself from 1994 to 2023, you can see that it has had its various shares of up and downs over those years. The data indicates that we are currently at the lowest ad valorem tax rate that we have ever had over the past 30 plus years of assessing a rate for the city of Rome. Those adopted rates that you see on this slide are based on the decisions that the council teams made prior to you coming into office. A lot of times it's based on the debt rate of the city and also the maintenance and operation costs for the various services that we provide. Then just looking generically for the last five years, you can see that that has also gone up and down and it has fluctuated approximately four cents up or down in either direction from 19 forward. The far teal blue color on the right hand side is the current tax rate for this fiscal year of 2223, as it was mentioned at .437815. When you look at the tax rate comparison, this information has been in your budget for several years. We also discussed this at your budget workshop. The city of Rome, as mentioned, is in the lower tier of the peer cities that we compare against. A lot of those things will be driven, as I said, on your INS debt rate, your MNO needs from providing services to the community. But you will see that Justin, Bridgeport, Decatur, Boyd, all of those growing and evolving communities are approximately 20 cents higher than what this current tax rate is for the city of Rome. When you go past that and you look at the tax rate comparison of MNO versus INS, we also looked at this at the budget retreat. You will see that Rome is in the lower third of this conversation, just ahead of Northlake and Roanoke. And our current INS rate is approximately .21 cents per $100 valuation. And the MNO rate is .23. And to distinguish the difference, the INS rate is the debt that we currently pay. This will change significantly in the coming fiscal year as well as the year after as we have two bonds, debts, revenue bonds that we're going to retire in that timeframe. So you will see this number change when we prepare the budget at this time next year. So giving you a broad overview of what you're looking at in general fund, I've kind of brought in some additional information from the budget retreat just for people who are tuning in or who weren't at that retreat. The general fund serves as your general operating account for Rome. Think of it as your main checking account for this type of service delivery. We put revenue and expenditures for city business, administration, development, court, police in this particular fund and we track those funds on if not a weekly basis, a monthly basis. It is the largest fund currently that we have for the city. Utility fund will be your next runner up from the standpoint of providing for water and sewer. And as shown above, most of those accounts account for that particular operational cost of providing the service. We also have other funds that we manage and look over as it relates to the hotel motel tax fund. That is one that's been discussed recently. The Rome beautification fund is also its separate account. Grants fund where we track money that we receive through grants and money that we pay out according to grants. Court security and technology. The fire department itself is on its own fund, which is why you see a transfer out of general fund into the fire department and is parks and rec. You see a transfer out of general fund into the parks and rec fund to keep track of that. And we also have consolidated cash account. And then last but not least is the utility fund, which we discussed. It is an enterprise fund, meaning that is supposed to pay for itself. It's supposed to be self-funded. And the revenue that you receive in that fund is generated from the water and sewer rates that we collect throughout the system. We do provide water outside the direct city of Rome, so it's not just entirely borne by the Rome residents. Now, looking ahead at some fund overviews, I wanted to provide you all an additional look at what we were, what we had experienced in general fund as far as revenue and expenditures. Rome has done a very good job of predicting revenues and keeping expenditures just under that amount. That's not uncommon in a city. And it certainly has served us well as we have grown over the past five years. The question was raised as to how we could put forth a budget for this year based on the fact that we do not have an audit for fiscal year 2022. One is not contingent upon the other. However, we do not intend for current expenditures to exceed revenues unless we have some sort of an idea and direction from council to use fund balance. I mentioned to you before that we did have, or we do have consultants that are coming in that are doing a deep dive on all of our accounts. It's not labeled a forensic audit, but it's as close to it as you could possibly get. They have accounted for, moved money into the specific restricted accounts that we have and the funds that we have to account for things such as the million dollars that we receive from RVR. And they are making sure that all of that money ties back to our bank reconciliations and that it ties back to the current accounting system that we moved to about 18 months, 24 months ago. Their service has been invaluable to the city and I am hopeful they will be back on site next week. I am extremely hopeful that they will be finished at the end of that time. And I should be able to give council and the community an idea of what in each of those funds we currently have in reserves. Do we have 200 days in reserves? Most cities, when they set a financial policy for fund balance in general fund, want to, want to maintain a minimum of 90 days of operational cash in the bank. In case we have a downturn in the economy, there's some hiccup within city operations and we need to draw from our savings account, quote unquote. Most cities maintain that minimum of 90 days. I'd like to know where we sit because I can't tell you what's in fund balance at the moment because our budget has not evolved to that level at, prior to this. But we will have it for this budget year. So prior to passing, I'll be able to tell you in utility fund, we have X number of days in reserves. Same thing for general fund. I'll be able to give you an accounting of what we have in the hotel motel fund and what could we spend that on? What's in the Rome beautification fund? What has accumulated over the years? And I expect that work to be finished from those consultants that we have brought in. That is, as I mentioned, not labeled quote unquote a forensic audit, but it is very, very close if it's not. They have spent a considerable amount of time talking with current staff, talking with the auditor in Wichita Falls, talking with the appraisal district to make sure that we are calculating the truth in taxation form correctly and that we have the necessary resources that we need to properly manage all of the revenue that comes in for the city going forward. As we have talked, the city of Rome is on the cusp of a tremendous amount of growth, be it in the city limits directly or outside the city limits. Remains to be seen as we talk to various developers. As I spoke with you at the budget workshop, I am meeting with developers at least twice, twice a week about various projects within our city limits and those. a week about various projects within our city limits and those that are completely adjacent and/or out along 114, where they may want to annex into the city limits in order to obtain police and fire coverage so that they know that they have that service delivery and what that would mean to them. We just have to make sure that we have the infrastructure to serve them. So we will be in a much better position once we finish this budget year. We will be on sound footing to go forward as we make those predictions and we make those decisions to either dip into fund balance if we need to or stay within the revenues and the expenditures that are currently predicted for each fiscal year. Does that make sense? This budget is built on some current assumptions that I did not have for you at the workshop that I want to make sure that we're clear about today. The base budget that you have in front of you does not include any payroll or insurance adjustments as of today's discussion. It also does not factor in any change up or down in the tax rate, because we do not have that yet from the appraisal district. All building maintenance funds in each department was reverted back to $1,000 per facility. You will recall that the council had approved in excess sales and use tax last year for the Police Department, the Fire Department, and Public Works to expend $50,000 apiece to upgrade those facilities. That money has, is not allocated in this coming budget year, and I have set each of those funds back to $1,000. As of now, as I mentioned, I don't anticipate use of fund balance in the base budget, but that will depend on decisions that council makes. Fund balance for general fund and reserves, as I stated, is still being calculated with a pre-audit accounting team. Budget-neutral revenues and expenditures, those for which we receive outside funding such as the Aurora contract, who provides $50,000 to the Police Department, the RVR funding of both a firefighter and a police officer and a vehicle. Those are budget-neutral. We don't expend the funds unless we receive them in, same thing as it relates to grants. There are no capital expenditures or infrastructure anticipated in the current base budget numbers. That does not mean that we don't have a need for it. It just has not been, I don't have any direction from council which way to go as of yet. Every department, you will see, had an increase in worker compensation costs, so those are built into each budget, because that is something that we can't necessarily negotiate or adjust. It is provided to us through the TML IRP, and we absorb those costs when they come in and do an audit. So moving into general fund, you all as council members and I have provided some information on the table behind you, both of the draft base budget as well as the slide deck. The general fund itself is laid out in two separate or distinct areas, both the revenue and the expenditure side. You will see that for the revenue in the coming year, I have a prediction, a very conservative prediction, that we may see an additional 5% in revenue that comes in through the sales and use tax. I expect the current year's sales and use tax to come in above what we budgeted. You will see in the second column over for the adopted FY 2223 that sales and use was predicted at $1.15 million. We are currently on track to at least exceed that by $150,000 if not $200,000. So that would be factored into your fund balance, and council would make the decision how to use that going forward. I did increase next year's prediction in the base budget by $100,000, so you do see in that base versus adopted, that $100,000 difference, which is a 9% increase in that line item. Overall, I do think that revenue will go up about $106,000 roughly, which is approximately 5%. I am also trying to obtain a confidential report from the Comptroller's Office. Mayor Mitchell signed the document for us this week, so we're hopeful to get that from them. That would give us an idea of what we are receiving each month from LOVES in sales and use tax, and then I can predict potentially what we will receive from QT. As you know, it is anticipated to open in February of next year. However, they are moving along very quickly, and I don't know if they will need all of that time, and if they don't, and they open sooner, that's great, because then they will start generating that sales and use tax, and we will start to receive some additional revenue in that particular area.
With the QT, wasn't there something in the contract, though, about limited sales tax?
Correct.
That we would get off of them for a certain period of time?
The council at the time agreed to share sales and use tax for five years, so it will have to be mitigated through that. We have to give it back to QT.
You give it back to them?
So it's given to us, and then we write them a check.
So we don't, we're not going to get any revenue necessarily from sales tax?
No, we'll get half of it.
Okay.
So if I can get the information from LOVES, which, using a round number, if, say, LOVES generates $20,000, I would expect to see $10,000 to the city each month based on that, and those are completely hypothetical numbers. When you move to the expenditure side of the ledger, remember, none of these numbers include anything as it relates to insurance escalations or payroll changes. I will tell you that we have a predicted number from our insurance broker of an approximate 12% increase in our current costs. I need some additional time to evaluate what that means as it relates to that top part where it says insurance, taxes, retirement, et cetera, before I can bring you any potential changes in those line items. It does show, you will see, a slight increase in payroll for this particular department that was approved by council mid-year for the utility billing position and the city secretary position. The main points from this slide is I have proposed an increase in the training line item to account for three total staff members and funds for council to attend TML. That is approximately $9,000 increase. Currently, we do not have any funds set aside for our finance specialist to attend any of the government finance officers association training, and she needs to attend that. That will help with the maintenance of the system internally. She will network with other people. She would gain valuable information from that organization, and we have not slated any professional development for that position. In addition, I put $5,000 of that $9,000 in there should council decide to go to TML. I would highly encourage you all to attend that conference once every couple of years or every year if you can. It is an amazing way to network with other cities and other council members, and the training sessions that they offer are specifically relevant to what we deal with as a council and a city on a daily basis. This year's conference is actually going to be in Dallas. If any of you have any interest in attending, please let me know. We don't currently have funds budgeted for that, but we could certainly consider that particular cost. It's, I believe, $400 registration fee, and if you went back and forth each day, then we would not incur hotel costs, but it would be very beneficial to attend. You will also see that there is a one-year reduction in the lease for City Hall. We paid two years ahead, so we will not have that expenditure in this current year. So when you look at the lease and maintenance of building and structures, you'll see a reduction of approximately $31,500. We have a reduction in the contract services line as we have completed paying for the severance agreement with the previous city administrator, so that is reduced. And overall, this department, general fund administration, shows an overall reduction as of the base budget of 9% in expenditures. Any questions on this? Okay. Moving on to the Police Department itself, this is also in base budget form. You will see that a couple of items that were added to the budget that were not currently included in this year's fiscal document are the RVR contract revenue and the Aurora contract revenue. Both of these generate funds on behalf of the Police Department to offset the expenditures, and so as part of our budget evolution, I have included this information here for council to review. In the documents that I originally sent to you by email, there were a few changes as it relates to the RVR contract revenue. What was adopted in fiscal year 2223 was, I had it listed at 117. I did not include the vehicle costs, so I had to adjust that up to $290,000. In addition, $95,557 is the correct amount for the officer, and that is based on $77,000 worth of salary, $15,000 for supervision costs, and approximately $3,500 worth of workman's comp insurance. You will also see an overall reduction in this department in revenue of about 7%. We will not be auctioning vehicles in the next fiscal year, and the RVR contract will not pay for another vehicle in the coming year, so that is something that changes their revenue projections. However, if you control for both of those items, you only see a decrease in revenue of approximately 1%. Looking at the expenditures as it relates to the Police Department in your summary page, we do have an increase in the maintenance of equipment and fuel that's just based on the amount of road mileage that the officers are putting out, as well as the cost of the fuel itself. You will see that they had an additional decrease in building maintenance from approximately $12,000 to $1,000. There had been some upgrades that were budgeted for this fiscal year for the Police Department that are not currently, as we've set it back to the base budget of $1,000. If council decides to do anything in the future relative to facilities, the $1,000 is not going to cover anything other than just very minor repairs, if we had a minor plumbing issue or something to that effect. So if we have something that occurs in the next fiscal year, we'll have to bring it back to you for budget amendment in order to allocate those funds for that expenditure. Moving to the Municipal Court, which is also funded out of the general fund, you will see that I've held the revenue projections for that department flat for the coming year. All of the revenue that the Municipal Court generates is collected through the issuance of citations and the closure of cases throughout the 12 months that we run our budget. If citations go up or down, it affects these numbers, and currently, we are trending to stay with the base number that I have listed there, which is the same as the adopted fiscal year for this year, at $430,000 in court fines and revenues. You will also see, as I mentioned, the Building and Security Fund and the Court Technology Fund is listed in its own line. They're just underneath the credit card convenience fee. Because those are restricted funds and can only be spent for those specific uses, we have to account for them separately and track them separately. Looking at expenditures in this particular department, it shows an overall increase in a base budget of 3%. However, if you control for the restricted funds, which are your state revenues and your building security and your technology, this increase is actually 1% in this department. We have had some higher costs for the prosecutor to come in and conduct the cases and handle our pro se dockets, et cetera, with our attorneys, and we would like to allocate a small amount of overtime for the Municipal Court this year. Kristi is currently the only person who is, Julie backs her up some, but Kristi is the main person in Municipal Court who has the knowledge base to process tickets and assist the defendants, and we are often juggling her hours during normal business hours because she's had to work late for court, or she's come to a council meeting to present or something to that effect, and I don't have any leeway for her to spend those extra hours. And so if we have to take them off the day, that means that that department is mostly unmanned, if you understand kind of the trajectory we're going. There's also a slight increase in office supplies to reflect the current trending that we see in the budget for both this fiscal year and the previous. Moving on to development and code compliance, breaking this down as it relates to revenue, this is where we book two main areas of health inspections and permits, and then the general permits, et cetera, where it relates to development, plat review, things that have to do with actual expansion. We do receive some general permitting on each home that is constructed in RVR of $100, so that has been very beneficial to us. Both of these areas are held flat for this year, as I don't have any large developments currently on the horizon that will come within the next fiscal year. However, if that changes, if some of these folks that I'm talking to do come forward and start a project in the next fiscal year, we will need to adjust these revenue projections up. We also book hotel motel taxes here, and you'll recall, we talked about that briefly earlier. Those are specific taxes that are collected, a 7% fee for each room that is leased at the motel here in town. We have to keep it in its own fund, and we can only spend it on certain items, so it is tracked separately. When you also look in this department as it relates to expenditures, I believe that we could reduce our engineering costs in this area by about $21,000. Most engineering costs are currently booked to a particular project, and they are paid by the developer. Only if the city makes a decision to pursue a project within our city limits, such as a street repair or something of that nature, would we incur costs that are not going to be paid by developers. So I believe we could lower that from $52,000 approximately, excuse me, from $73,000 approximately down to $52,000 for engineering fees. Okay, moving to a separate fund as it relates to the Fire Department, and it's been some of our conversation this afternoon. Fire Department does receive a transfer in from general fund to assist with their operations. You will also see that they have several different line items in their department that generates revenue on behalf of their operational needs. If you will look, the base budget versus the adopted budget for the Wise County contract, I have predicted that to be an additional $8,000. That seems to be the trend that we have seen this year and before. You will see that cost recovery, which basically deals with accidents on the side of the road and fees that we charge and collect from them, has been predicted or requested to reduce by $6,600 in the next year, and grant revenue is down by $24,000. In addition, fundraisers are down $9,000. Chief is not sure that they will run two fill-the-boot drives next year. He's expecting only one, so based on that, we lowered the revenue projections. You will see, and one of the other things, as I mentioned, budget-neutral information on that line item that says grant revenue that's at $25,000. If we don't receive the grant, we don't expend the monies. So you will see a corresponding reduction in expenditures for that line item from what we had in the current adopted year of $29,000, reduced down 24 to a total of $5,000. That is what we call budget-neutral. It doesn't impact general fund or their operating costs for the Fire Department, because it is all funded from a secondary source. As required by the IRS, we discuss the fact that we now pay our part-timers, part-time firefighters, and we issue them a W-2. Thus, I moved those costs from contracts to salaries and wages at the top of the expenditures. We also increased building maintenance by $2,800 to mainly account for the workman's comp liability audit. That does not mean that there's an additional $2,800 in that line item or that summary to pay for building repairs. That is just one of the components that is in this summary document. Overall, from the adopted 2223 fiscal year to the base budget for 2324, this department shows a 3% increase as of today's conversation. The Parks and Recreation Fund also is its own fund, as we discussed. You see a transfer at the top from general fund in this fiscal year of $48,000. Of next fiscal year, it's projected at $18,000, which is a reduction of 30, and I would like to receive some feedback from council on this particular line item. We have had on our budget books for several years a series of projects related to the park that either through a lack of staffing capacity or cost escalations, we have not implemented. I don't know if council wants to continue to fund that additional $30,000 into this area, or if we want to hold on that transfer until we know we're actually going to do the projects. So I showed it basically as covering basic expenditures to keep the park maintained, and that includes not just the family park, but the Veterans Park, but no additional projects for that area until we get that worked out. We currently don't have a functioning parks board, and I imagine once we got that back up on its feet, we would want to consult those folks to make sure that those previous projects are still applicable today. Any questions on any of these funds before we move to utility fund? We're going through this pretty quick.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So back when we created the full-time fire chief position, we budgeted their salary with what we had.
I'm not sure how that number was derived. Maybe somebody could shed some light on it, but it is significantly under the department heads that you have for police and fire, or, excuse me, for police and public works.
I kind of wanted to have a discussion about that to see if there's something that we can do to bump him up, even if it's a little bit. I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
It is a possibility if council makes the motion and approves a mid-year budget adjustment like we did for the utility billing manager and the city secretary this year. It's not a difficult process. It just requires council direction.
What, do y'all have any comments or?
I'm kind of on the same line you are. I mean, if we can.
Because he's woefully under.
We don't have to have a separate agenda item.
It's budget.
Because we're talking about budgets right now.
It is budget. So no, I did ask Carvin that question, if we had any changes in any of the line items, because you have a budget discussion on the agenda, council can take action. So currently, the fire chief is paid $73,000. So currently, the fire chief is paid $73,000. That is well below the position salary scale that I have pulled together from our peer cities, which we will discuss at a later date. Your current other department heads are paid closer in the neighborhood of $85,000. So he's at least $12,000 or $13,000 below his peers within the city, let alone his peers in his field.
And I know we can't match the market value of what other chiefs are paid.
Not yet.
But I feel like we could do something to let him know that he's appreciated, and he's gone.
So... Oh, he's in the back. He's back behind some folks.
I just don't have enough information on the rates that the position is paid at other locations at this point in time. I realize it's probably lower, and I just, I would like more information.
Well, we don't have any of the information from other departments, but from our department heads, he's way lower than all the other department heads. That's all I'm saying.
And all I'm saying is, I want to know how much we need to adjust to make it.
I'm happy to bring that back to council, but I can tell you, for the fire department, fire chief position, the average minimum starting salary for our peer cities is $110,000. So we're not going to be able to get to that level of pay for that position. We do not have the funding for that. That's part of another discussion that council had given me some direction, to try to put together some position scales, because we don't currently have those. This is something that's...
Some of those peer cities, though, we don't have the tax base that they do.
You're correct. That's why I said we could not match $110,000 today. We have to step into this as we grow. And most people who work for a city that's growing, they understand that. But to Mrs. Ty's point, we still have a deficit just within our own city structure. And that's at council's choice, whichever direction they want to go on that.
I mean, I would like to see him get something, whether it's $4,000 or $5,000, I don't know, but something.
Yeah, I'd just like to see a recommendation. For an amount.
Oh, what, like a total? See, and I didn't want to do a huge chunk, because we might not be able to do that chunk.
Yeah, I don't know the size of the chunk.
Well, the chunk would be $12,000. $12,000 would be the chunk.
Based upon your current department head's pay rate versus his.
And they just doubled that part-time salary. Is that what happened? No, I understand he was part-time. I'm speaking about the full-time chief being paid. So no one, I mean...
I'd like to see at least matching the other department heads. If we can get there, I mean, how can we get there? I'm also on the same line. I'd like to look at some numbers too, but it's not as important as...I know the other guys that I work with, what they make. And I'm just like, to me, we need to at least get him up to the other department heads, or close.
I agree with that.
So your other department heads in those positions are currently paid $85,995. Your fire chief is paid $73,000.
Would this be, would y'all want to do a step increase, just to get him there and do something now, and then maybe in a year, when he has his year anniversary, step him up again?
That's at council's discretion. You will be reviewing what you want to do and pay for the entirety of the staff, as it relates to the budget, but this is one of those areas that we do have a deficiency.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's pretty fair. You go halfway, and then every year, evaluate.
Well, if that's the case, I'm gonna make a motion to bump him up $6,500?
With the start of the budget?
No, in this budget, this current budget. I think Mr. Gann said that that was possible.
It is possible, and you do have the funds for it.
I'll second.
I understood that we were going to be limited tonight on the budget for next year, not that you were adjusting the budget for this year.
The agenda says budget discussion.
Of course.
We have a, we have a second, so...
We need to call for a vote.
I didn't hear the first. Well, of course, it was Ty. You made the second.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. So looking back at the expenditures for the fire department, we were talking about the increased building maintenance. I think we've kind of talked through this one. Do you have any questions on any of the other funds before we jump into utility?
Yeah, I had a question. I know we've discussed ARPA funds.
Correct.
In the past. And have any of those requests been included in this budget?
No, sir. Those are separate and apart from your budgetary documents. You've got about $200,000 left that we need to allocate by the end of the year.
Let me rephrase that. Are there some things that should be in the budget that we were talking about for ARPA, simply because of the fact that they require annual maintenance, things like that?
We will talk, this is simply a base budget, to basically continue what we're doing this year or next. I did not have any program expansion or escalations for that. That would be something that council would need to look at in light of the recommendations of things that we need to fund, whether they're one-time expenditures, or whether they're ongoing for the next couple of fiscal years with that ARPA money. I do have a recommendation from staff on some of that, but again, it's at council's discretion where they use the funds.
And those have to be used by, or allocated?
They just have to be, they have to be dedicated or allocated by the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Any other questions on the funds that do not involve water and sewer? So looking ahead then to the utility system, for those who did not attend the budget workshop, we currently have 17 and 1/2 miles of line that we maintain as it relates to the water system. We have well-water storage tanks, five of those, that are called ground storage tanks. We have wells three through number six, which are four groundwater wells. We have one elevated tank that holds a million gallons of water. We have a large ground storage tank and booster station off FM 3433. We have the Bobo Plant, which is the inlet from the Wise, excuse me, the Walnut Creek Special Utility District. We have a new SCADA system for this particular area of service delivery, and we have three lift stations. We also have owned and operated an east and a west wastewater treatment plant. The original east plant was built in 1967, and were comprised of M-Hoff lagoons. We've now upgraded those through a package plant in 2011. And the west plant was originally built as a package plant in 1998. When you look at the utility fund history, as far as revenue and expenditures, you can see up until '21-'22 and '22-'23 projections, we have run pretty close to revenue and expenditures for this particular department. We do watch this closely. Now that we now have a public works director in place, Jesse and I are discussing these numbers almost on a weekly basis, especially in light of the water restrictions. And staff have done an excellent job over the years in reducing any expenditures if they see that their projected revenues are not coming in on track. The pre-audit accounting team, as I mentioned to you, is also going through this fund to make sure that everything ties back to our books and predicting what we have in reserves in this particular area. When you look at the next slide, this is also one that we discussed at the budget retreat. You can see that since 1990, we have done minimal improvements to this multimillion-dollar system. We do have some 2019 and 2020 funds from that bond issuance that improved the east plant and prepared it for expansion if Prairie Point comes online. And we do have about $300,000 of that left that is allocated to I&amp;I runoff repairs for the clay pipes that exist in various spots in Old Town. So we are working to get that transacted and finish up that particular bond issuance. We do have several deferred maintenance costs on the utility fund that we discussed, that we are either going to need to rehab the current wells that we have. We're going to either need to drill new wells, especially in light of what's going on with Walnut Creek and the line maintenance, with that 17 and 1/2 miles of line is a significant amount to maintain. Here you will see that the utility fund revenue side of the ledger, I am predicting, or at least in the base budget, reducing that recommendation by $96,000. That's based on current and historical trends in this fund. With the water difficulties that we've had lately, we always prefer to be a little more conservative than optimistic, so that we come in on the budget numbers that we have predicted. When you look at the expenditures for the utility funds, I have reduced the utility projects line item by $20,000. That was basically matching grants for the CDBG money that we received for well six that we will not need to expend next year. We don't have any matching grant requirements to pay out of that. But I increased the maintenance and equipment of the machines by $21,000, because we currently have several elderly machines in that particular space that require a tremendous amount of upkeep. One of the things that's also affecting this line item is we still have trucks on order that have not come in. We are limping along with a couple of trucks that are barely in service, and one that's slightly better than bad. So the guys are keeping all that rolling on the road for the time being, but we are checking in routinely with that vendor. I don't really understand what the holdup is, but they keep telling us, Jesse, that it's not even on, it's not even on the production line yet. So we may have to make a decision, if it's at all possible, to go a different direction, because we're already paying for these trucks, and we don't have them. Utility fund expenditures spans a couple of slides. You will see that for total water operating and maintenance and sewer operating and maintenance, it is mostly flat, except for an increase with water line maintenance, sewer chemicals, because the costs for those have gone up. The current water line maintenance that we have in the base budget of $6,000 is only going to fix small things. It's not going to take care of any major leaks, and we would have to look at that if that comes to it. When you look here at the final slide for the utility fund, you'll see that the bottom line for this budget has an increase of approximately 2% in expenditures, which is, which is really good, considering cost escalations for a variety of things that these gentlemen use on a daily basis. As I mentioned to you at the budget retreat, we still have the '22 wastewater revenue bond that was approved by council. However, the bond was not issued. We are going to have to revisit this topic as we go over the next several months to determine which way council would like to go, because most of these numbers that you see on this slide are now updated, are going to have to be rebid. We'll have to determine what we can afford and what we can't afford based on those cost escalations. Then looking ahead, this is another item that we discussed at that retreat, the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, and this is a broad overview. But looking at the utility funds, we still need to replace that west wastewater treatment plant. I do have a bid from a company that sells and/or leases package plants that might be viable for us. We need to talk with the city engineer to see what that might look like, because I do have developers coming in, and one of the first things they ask is, can you handle the sewer? And right now, I have to say, no. We have a tremendous amount of I&amp;I inflow and infiltration that runs through the clay pipes that overwhelms that sewer when we have a rain event, and we've got to upgrade this. It is well past its lifespan, when it was put in place in 1998. Those clay tile lines that I mentioned, that run all through Old Town, are also elderly, and they are the cause of a good portion of that I&amp;I, because they have broken down, and we need to replace those. We very much need to consider drilling our own water wells to supply our own citizens with what they need, because we currently, given the restrictions that we're under now, we've had some conversations with Walnut Creek, and even though their website says stage two, I believe they wish they hadn't put that out at this time. And they have asked us to stay in stage three, which frustrates our residents, because they don't understand why there's the discrepancy between the two areas. I get that. I just know that Jesus is on the phone with them daily, asking about their water availability, and they have asked us daily to stay at stage three restrictions. We are now their largest water customer. So we are monitoring our output to make sure that we do not deplete any of our tanks, because at that point, you have to go on a boil water notice, and we really don't want to do that, if at all possible. So the gentlemen are doing a Herculean effort with what they've been given to work with, and I know it's frustrating. But if we had some functioning wells that produce some water per minute, we could augment what we're getting from Walnut Creek. Our current wells only produce 93 gallons a minute, in total, between all four of them. We are supposed to receive 1,050 from Walnut Creek a minute. So that should give you some idea of the imbalance between the two. It's also less expensive for us to produce our own groundwater than for us to purchase it from Walnut Creek. So these will be things council will want to look at. We also have some significant infrastructure issues with the current ground storage water tanks. We have a bid that would allow us to repair and/or service those on a monthly basis, that we need to consider factoring into the budget, but it is not an inexpensive process either. And we have several that are in a terrible state of disrepair. We have also received a letter and copper mandate from the federal government that we have to look at all of those connections and eliminate those as we're going through. Jesus has been on top of that, dealing with other cities and talking to them about those issues. We don't yet know what that cost will be for us, and we don't know yet if we can have any offsetting funds. So that's just something we've got to keep on our radar. And of course, that secondary water source, maybe from the city of Fort Worth, or Upper Trinity, or TRA, or somebody at that point, is something that we'll want to look at as we go forward. When you are looking at general fund expenditures itself, the facilities conversation is always looming. The senior center rehab, I had our inspector go back out to the senior center and give me a basic list of things that needs to be done for that to be reopened. I don't have associated prices for that yet, but I know that's important to many people in the community, and that would be something that council may want to consider. We have street repairs. I hear from people in Ellis quite frequently about the chip seal and their dissatisfaction with that product. I understand chip seal is not the best product. It is a product, but it is not the best. However, concrete roads are extremely expensive, and we have several, several miles of roads that we have to maintain. And we also have the apparatus replacement issues for the fire and EMT department, depending upon which way you go. All of those would be big capital items that we would want to look at. But I was asked a question of getting to what I recommend for this comment, for this next year beyond the base budget. All of that infrastructure, as it relates to water and sewer, we need to have a conversation as to how we're going to address that, through either bond issuance, or if we have anything in reserves that can potentially offset that. These are discussions that we've got to have and prioritize. Could we potentially lease a package plant where we're paying monthly, instead of issuing a bond and paying a tremendous amount all at one time? The second thing that we need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on are streets. We need to get an inventory of the current linear miles of streets that we have, and we need to put it on a rotation plan for replacement, upgrade, and/or repair. We don't have that as of now. You do need to look at pay adjustments for your current staff. I know this has been a topic of great consideration by the community, some weighing for, some weighing against, but I am telling you, this has been discussed in many of your recent budgets, that every person on your city staff is paid below the market value. They stay here because they love it, they love the community, but they are not being paid in a manner that befits the work that they're doing, and it is not competitive for other cities. It is a miracle that we have not had a mass exodus for folks finding other jobs. We would also like to consider the hiring of two additional firefighters. The current... The current staff members that we have are running themselves ragged, trying to deal with the amount of calls coming in. That is both paid and volunteer. The final conversation would be a part-time to full-time position in the police department and if council ever wants to look at apparatus for the fire department. Those are my top recommendations to you all to look at. When we figure out what we have left, what we think will have excess in revenues, that is when council can make the decisions of how they want to address these deficiencies going forward. I expect by the next budget meeting to have the information as it relates to our tax rate and hopefully can present that to you all along with the projected add valorem tax to see what that may generate for us in the coming year. So, any questions on this slide? And just briefly flipping through these next two, if you would, Shayna, this is something that we also discussed at the retreat. There are several other future planning needs that we need to talk about, three slides worth, as it relates to city operations. This is all part of our evolutionary process as a city. We are not what we were 10 years ago. We are also not today what we're going to be 10 years from now. So, we have to start planning out five years, 10 years ahead, predicting what our revenue and expenditures are going to be, predicting what our staffing needs are, what are our capital needs. That's the next version of the budget that we need to get to and we're well on the way this year, but we're not there yet. So, I'm happy to take any questions. You all have the summary information. You also have the detailed line items. I will try and answer that as I can, but what I need from council is what direction do you want me to take based upon these recommended changes? Or are there ones that you want us to pursue that are not on this list of recommended that I gave you beyond the base budget? I know that was a lot, wasn't it?
Now, I don't even know what was on the list for recommended.
So, if you look at slide 34 in your deck.
I didn't get that.
Oh, I'm sorry. You guys use electronic. I apologize. I've got a printed one down here. We'll bring it to you. Out of the utility fund, there is, as of course, we expect sewer and water issues that we need to deal with out of that fund.
Honestly, sewer and water kind of opened the door for everything else. So, for me, that for utility fund, like you were saying, we gotta, we gotta get something wrong with those.
I can bring to council the information that we received from the vendor who has the package plant that could potentially provide that to us as it relates to either a lease or an outright purchase. Their initial bid does not include demolition of the current site, so we would need to have some information on that. But I've got a bid at a .15 million gallons per day and a .20 million gallons a day.
From what I understand, the east plant, we can continue building onto it?
Correct. And those costs would likely be borne by the developer as they come in for Prairie Point and they're aware of that. When I talk with developers for Prairie Point, I'm having that conversation with them routinely.
Because I'd like to see the west plant get that kind of package plant, I guess, that we can, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask. It will be a similar type plant where you can
Yes, ma'am.
continue to expand it if you, if need be.
Correct.
What's involved with all the clay tiles? I mean, if you're going to start there, aren't you going to have to tear up the streets too?
I think Jesus can speak to that a little bit better than I can, so I'm going to ask him to come to the mic, please.
Um, yeah. So, on the clay tile, yes. I mean, there's, there's pipe bursting. Kind of puts a Band-Aid on the issue. I mean, it kind of fixes it, but at the same time, I don't really recommend putting a Band-Aid on the wound we're in, you know, so, uh, there's boring, there's other issues or other ways to go about, but I think it'd be more expensive on the long run because boring's not cheap. So, essentially, yes, you'd have to replace air, the crossings. It's not down every street, so it's just crossings usually. So, that's, that's something else to think about. It's not like, we're not going all the way down First Street, just tearing right down the middle. That's no, that's not what we're going to do.
That would be something we'd bring the engineer in on to get you all a recommendation because they'll need to do some analysis and an inventory and then they'll have to bring back a predicted cost.
And do y'all know where all the clay pipes are?
Yeah, from, uh, Main Street, B.C. Rome, all the way down to the apartments area, all of Old Town. That's a lot.
Exactly where they are, do you know? Because I know that we, we've hit water lines, not.
We pulled a lot of the plans that we found in our records management overview. We found a lot of water and sewer plans. I've given them to Jesus and he's been looking through those, but that's something, again, we'd need to work with the engineer on.
It, it's mostly everything that's considered Old Town and even across the road or track, still a little bit, not much. All of it's, uh, well, most of it is clay tile. Because Ellis came in, they're, uh, they're all PVC. And then Holly Parkway, that's PVC, but everything else out here is just, it's the old system still.
Well, I know for sure the west plant needs to be done. And I think we need water wells.
So, as far as the water wells, um, I mean, where, where would we even have the right to drill a well? I know there's locations of old wells in Old Town that are probably lost. And then, you know, could they be refreshed somehow?
So, the wells we do have right now are shallow wells. They're in the Paluxi. We want to get into the Trinity. We want to go producing from 30 gallons a minute to 250 gallons a minute. You have 3433, the, uh, pump station up there. You have Bobo, uh, well five is another one. They have to be separated by so much, so it's kind of an engineer and state talk at the same time. But we do have property to do it. It's just doing it.
So, we could just, in some of those places where there are wells, we could just dig deeper and then?
You add your disinfectant, I mean, per se, 3433, you drill your well, you pipe it to the tank, you add your disinfectant, and there's your well. There, you don't have to add a whole new tank, but there's areas we're going to have to add new tanks.
Any well would get more than one bid, right?
Yes.
We have to when it's over a certain amount.
Correct. I don't know yet. It depends on the production value and what council gives us direction on. We have four.
We, we have TCT requirements on how much water we got to produce out of the ground as we grow, yes. And so much storage capacity. So, essentially, you can't build 10,000 homes on 100 gallons a minute. It's just not going to happen. You got requirements we got to follow, state guidelines.
It's unlikely they're down deep enough on those wells. They're probably in the Paluxi as well. They're probably not down into the Trinity. It's extremely expensive.
If, if it's not producing enough water, if it's producing 20, 15 gallons a minute because it's residential, you'll spend more money on electricity and, and the infrastructure to do it. Right.
Okay, so for general fund, I mean, I for sure want to look at facilities, but I don't know that we will have that capacity to do that.
I, I would, that would not be my recommendation to council at this time to look at facilities. We've got to deal with the water and sewer first and know what those costs are. I just would ask that we be mindful that we have a historic school sitting next door to us that we do need to do some basic repairs to, to make sure that it remains functioning in the future if we ever decide to do something. I have toured it recently and we need to shore up some of the sort of windows that we have in there. So, that would be something that we would want to look at. We may or may not have some funds in this current year budget to look for that particular expenditure, but facilities is not something that I would put at the top of your list for this coming fiscal year. We, we need to deal with the infrastructure.
And I would like to see the payroll adjustment for current staff also. I mean, that's, I'd like to see a comparison and how below market they are.
I've done the work from the standpoint of collecting that and prepared to present it to council at the next meeting. I don't think anybody on staff has an expectation that we're going to step into it all at once. I do know that the city of Boyd put together a, it's either a three or five-year plan that they have published that they are moving their employees through because they know and they recognize they have folks they'd like to keep on staff. They recently just hired a lady that I knew from a previous city as a finance director. They're going through the same exact growing pains with their budget that we are going through. New Fairview was here tonight to talk about a variety of things or listen to that. We talk when we have our city manager meetings about how we can share costs and potentially reduce those for our cities. We understand completely that there is a need to share services and share resources and not think that each city needs to be its own island unto itself. It's just what can we realistically combine? Think about the partnership with the police department, with the city of Aurora. That is a great example of providing for a neighboring city and we are receiving a benefit in return. So, those type of things are opportunities that we should look for and that we discuss at those meetings. But to the payroll issue, I'm happy to bring that to council, knowing that this is going to be a couple of year process, not a simple answer.
I mean, is there a way that you can, for general fund? Because I know that we're not going to be able to do all of that. I mean, is there a way that you can bring just a, kind of an idea of what this is going to cost and what this is going to cost?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and the priority, and I know each department, they, there's, is a priority, but I guess we will have to figure that out.
With our firefighters right now, do we currently have firefighters going out on emergency calls by themselves?
Yes.
I don't like that.
I don't either.
Can we get numbers to where we are maybe not matching exactly, but at least competitive or getting close to competitive?
Correct. Yeah, so I'll present you with three different options. You, to get closer to market, it's an average 9% move for employees. There is a middle ground, which is, I believe, an average eight and a half or seven. I'd have to go back and check that number. And then, I've prepared the numbers at a flat 4% like has occurred over the past couple of years. Those are all things that council will have to consider in their decision-making process. But if you had to have me rank general fund, I would say the payroll adjustments and the two firefighters. Because I know for a fact that during one particularly busy day with grass fires, that chief worked 12 hours straight by himself. He's driving the truck and he's putting out the fires.
I, I know from personal experience at a young age, uh, doing some things on my own that I got into trouble, anyway.
Yeah, it's scary. It's very scary.
But hiring two, give them enough to have two on shift at all times?
Give them one on shift each, each time and the chief. And that's about what we could afford for the coming fiscal year because if you're going to fully staff, one shift, it's five people and we don't have the funds for that yet. So, we augment with volunteers and part-timers. But if we could have guaranteed, for the most part, that we had one dedicated officer every day, that would really change the dynamics. And keep in mind, council, that the current firefighter we have on staff is not paid for by us. That's paid for by RVR. So, those would be the, the two highest recommendations that I have. The other would be moving the part-time administrative assistant to full-time in the police department. That's a minimal impact on the budget numbers, but it would be a maximum impact on the department. It would put somebody most every day in the office to answer the phones and, and be available for residents. They could also perform some additional duties as it relates to report generating and writing and assisting the chief, looking at the inventory, all kinds of things that we cannot currently do. Taking care of the evidence room.
So, did we give you enough direction or, okay?
I will provide you the numbers and what the impact will be to both of the different funds and we will have to come back and make a, a decision. Any other questions? Thank you all for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Who's the, who was the second? Thank you. All in favor? Right here, it's eight forty-five.